Here, goose have a goose.
All right, okay. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cherry, can you please do a roll call?
Tim Ogdeneman.
President.
Todd Clemmons. Erica Connor.
Here.
Don Cox. Fews. Mary DeMore.
Here.
Art Schneider.
Here.
Craig Berth.
Here.
Jeff Volko.
Here.
Cherry Wintowski here.
Okay, this is an open meeting and it has been noted as such. First up, we, do we want to do the student rep report or?
No, if we could have Representative Scott Allen go first, so we want to welcome Scott back. Thank you for joining us again. I think you were here last year right about this time.
Right.
Yes, and so if you want to start by giving us an update on any current legislation regarding public education related to schools, the budget, anything like that, talk about yourself and what you're doing in the Assembly right now, that'd be great.
Sure, well, of course, we affectionately call this particular budget as the reelection budget. It's, it's nice to be able to give things away. Of course, the terminology, the appropriate terminology from the governor's office is it's the reform dividend that he's able to give away, so it does make budgeting a little bit easier. There are some very intriguing and interesting proposals by the governor within the budget itself, looking at it as a whole, but there are also some things that we as the legislature are going to take, going to take a closer look at. It is a quite a voluminous document and what's interesting, I found, this being my second go around in the budget, is everybody knows more about the budget than I do. And I say that in all, half joking, but really sort of serious because you guys probably maybe get the budget and you've got, you know, you look at the education components right away, right? What's in there for education? And so you guys know all the details about education. And then I go to a different group and maybe it's a transportation-related group and they've already examined every component that relates to transportation. You know, you've got a singular focus. Well, I've got a thousand-page document on my desk. So I'm painstakingly going through section by section by section, so I'm not intimately familiar with all the details as it stands today. But that's what we'll be doing over the next several weeks, is going through, my staff and I, every section of the budget, making sure we're very well acquainted with it, and then drafting particular budget amendments that we might bring to our counterpart on the Joint Finance Committee. As you know about the process, the Joint Finance Committee is the committee that makes the decisions that relate to the budget. There are eight members from each House, the Senate and the Assembly, and the Republicans have control over both Houses, so majority of Republicans on that committee. And they make, you know, most of the decisions as it relates to the budget, but we do have an opportunity to interact with our companion on the Joint Finance Committee. So we will be meeting on a fairly regular basis, probably every two weeks between now and May, to talk about the budget, different components of the budget. They're there as a resource to answer our questions, if we've got any questions as it relates to the budget. And then we also can submit amendments that we would like to see as a modification. The biggest decision, and I'm not quite sure if it's been announced yet, but they're debating about whether they take the governor's proposal as the base document that they begin deliberating on, or if they go back to what they call the base budget, which is the current operating budget, and have that as the base and then append it with maybe many of the governor's ideas. So I'm not quite sure which route they're going to take. We did sort of an informal survey in our caucus, and it seemed to me that our caucus was pretty much split or indifferent as to which route we go. But it's just a process of whether things that the governor wants gets added back in or if we take the governor's and then we start to peel off different pieces. So I'm not quite sure how it's going to evolve, but that's sort of the lay of the land. The Joint Finance Committee does go around the state and have public hearings to allow the public to provide input, so certainly they'll be announcing the schedule and you're welcome to attend any of those. But as always, I always welcome input from citizens or, you know, community servants such as yourself, so don't hesitate to contact my office, whether it's education-related or something else in the budget that you would like to see modified. So I'm, I'm really more here to entertain what thoughts you have about the budget, more so than for me to pontificate about my ideas, so I hope that was a sufficient introduction and I'd entertain any questions.
That's great, thank you. So if you guys want to go ahead and ask questions, I think for sure we have two issues that we wanted to talk about. One was the September 1st start date for schools, and you may have heard a little bit about that from other school districts. And then we also wanted to touch on the budget and our particular situation here in McQuanago with our very, very, very low revenue cap.
Right.
And Tom has some information, I think he shared that with you there, and our board is well-versed on our situation and our need for more funding. But I'll let you guys go first, so if you want to ask questions or offer comments, that'd be great.
With regards to the $200 per student, he mentioned something about those who implement Act 10. I want to know, what are our chances if we have implemented almost everything we can for the Act 10 changes versus someone like Milwaukee, who probably has not, but will wind up getting more because of their free and reduced kids? Is there any chance that we could get more, the districts that have implemented and used the Act 10 will, can get more revenue back than those districts, or we're just on the same pool and get used to it?
Well, you know, one of the things that I don't like about how education's funded in the state is that it's pork barrel politics. And so there's a lot of different categorical aids, and categorical aids are a great way for a legislator to be able to go back to their district and see, see, look at all this money I brought back. And I think that's an unfortunate process. The good news in that bad news cloud is that the per pupil aid that is the $200 that you're referring to is a categorical aid, so it is, it is contingent upon compliance with Act 10. But that's not to say that other school districts aren't going to benefit in other ways from other categories. So that's how you see some school districts benefiting more, if you will, is because of the other categories. And it is a political process.
Onto what Mary has asked about, you know, I imagine Tom has shared with you the graph that shows where we are in relation to many of the other districts, especially those in close proximity to us, from a per pupil basis, which is, I mean, it's a dramatic difference, which does affect what we can and can't do, and we do a very good job with what we're able to use.
Right.
But it does have its limits. I guess, more than just in this budget, has there been any conversation at all about doing something that's extremely difficult, which would be to basically start from square one and restructure the whole thing so that it actually makes sense and isn't cobbled up the way it is now?
There are conversations along those lines, but right now that's all they are, is conversation. So it's sort of the elephant in the room. Everybody acknowledges it's a problem, everybody would like to see it solved, nobody's putting pen to paper and coming up with brilliant ideas to solve it. It is, the nature of change in government is a difficult one, so, you know, there, the immediate response is to, for districts and representatives to do an assessment of who the winners are and who the losers are from the change. And so I'm not quite sure how we can get to that point of getting people to the table for a serious conversation about changing the formula. Many legislators are acknowledging that it is a necessity, but I haven't seen the political will to get it done.
That being said then, with this $200, if it were to remain that, is there any conversation or would you be supportive of some kind of conversation to weight that so that school districts such as ours benefit more than perhaps a school district like Nicolay, which is at the top of the list by far from where we are, and try to help prop up that bottom part a little bit more when, you know, we're at $9,200 per pupil and they're at 15,000 per pupil? I mean, do they really need that when we really can use it more?
Right.
And so is there any thought about weighting it in such a way?
I'm gonna write that down. We haven't, I haven't heard anybody talking about that idea. This is still sort of new, this per pupil idea, this bonus money, if you will, this reform dividend. It does make budgeting a little bit easier, but there are still discrepancies from, as you've pointed out, from school district to school district. We don't even have to go as far as Nicolay, we can do that right here in our own county.
Absolutely.
So it's, it's an interesting idea that I certainly will talk about.
Is that, excuse me, to jump on Jeff's ad here, is that $200 even a, is that a pipe dream? Is that, is that even something to be even talk about?
No, I think that's very real.
The additional 200.
Yeah, it's, well, and it's 200, I believe, in the first year of the biennium and another $205 in the second biennium, second year of the biennium, so it, I think it's very real. Will it be that total dollar amount? Will it be in that form? Will, will there be some sort of, you know, proration? If you, I mean, it's gonna be, it's subject to manipulation, but I think there will be a, an increase, a per pupil categorical aid of some sort. I just don't know what it's going to look like in its final form.
Go ahead, Art.
You can do it.
No, I'm probably gonna switch gears.
Okay, well, so am I. So, so you don't really know exactly what's in the budget, can, you know, involving education, that's what you're saying? I mean, not every detail on that?
Not every detail, no.
Right.
I've looked, I looked through it today in preparation for tonight's meeting.
Right.
But I don't have it memorized.
So you, as a representative, I mean, what are, what are your dreams, your perfect world? What are you going to work on for education while you're in the Madison?
Well, thank you, I appreciate that question. I think that, you know, I'm very well aware of the funding formula problems and have had discussions, not just here with you guys, but also with the Kettle Moraine School District, who also is very much in the same boat. One of the ideas that we've tossed around is to, to change the, if there's going to be differences, that we should mitigate the differences within a county, so almost have like a countywide revenue per student formula rather than a school district by school district. So I've had some conversations with some legislators about that, and I'm interested to see if we can maybe start moving in the right direction. I'd also, quite frankly, I'd like to see school districts funded differently than, than through the property tax. I'm not sure if that's the best mechanism, but, you know, there's a lot of discussions right now with a lot of really bright people taking place about how, what are our sources of funding? You know, there's one guy, Representative John Mochill, he heads up the Ways and Means Committee, and he, he, he just gets so animated, it's quite funny, because he's like, we have so many different exemptions from our state sales tax. So we have a state sales tax, but then we have so many different exemptions from it. He says, if we eliminated all the exemptions from the state sales tax, he's like, we could get rid of the income tax, or we could, you know, get rid of the property tax. So he's just all excited about the possibilities, so I think there's a lot of ideas sort of in the mix right now. So that's one concept, is to say what, you know, how can we begin that dialogue of more funding fairness for school districts? The other is that when we talk about school start time, to recognize that we have significant differences regionally in the state. There is a tremendous amount of pressure from those tourist areas of Wisconsin to protect the September 1st date. And when we say, well, all right, how about we just allow school districts to modify on their own, they still see that as a problem because then we're tapping into their potential market, right? So if, if the parents here in McQuanago have to be home because their kids are already starting school, then they're not gonna be in the, in the Dells on vacation that Labor Day weekend. So these conversations, you know, it's almost like there's, there's a lot of rigidity in their, in their thinking and not flexibility. I think we need to have maximum flexibility and allow greater choices, but that's a matter of power. So one of the, one of the longstanding members of Joint Finance is a key senator from the Wisconsin Dells area. So he yields a fair amount of influence, if you will, on that committee. Now, if we can get others on that committee who are equally influential to advocate on behalf of a flexible start date, we can make some headway. So I don't have a huge education agenda as it relates to K-12 education. One of the areas that I've done a fair amount of research on over the last year has been as it relates to growing our workforce by starting earlier in the education process. The research suggests that the executive functions that develop between the ages of six months and five years are critically important. And when you have kids that are coming into kindergarten inadequately prepared, where they don't know their numbers, they don't know their letters, they don't know their colors, and they're already starting at a disadvantage in kindergarten, then that ripples its way through all, all through, in fact, they say that the achievement gap you can eliminate it through 12 years, 13 years of, of, you know, education. So we have a workforce shortage in Waukesha County, and it seems crazy to me that you go 15 miles to the east and there's a significantly underemployed population. That disconnect needs a solution if we're gonna grow our economy in Waukesha County, particularly as the baby boomers retire. So we've got to look to find some better solutions for our workforce going forward, and I think that may be a key area.
Tim?
So Representative Allen, first of all, thank you for your service to our great state and us taxpayers. Also, you're a veteran, correct?
Yes.
So thank you for your service in our, in the Army. Kinda, I would only echo what's already been said here, you know, I feel that we place a burden on the taxpayers when we ask them for more money, when other communities and districts get to enjoy other luxuries from the state. But I guess to kinda change gears, as I mentioned, and this is probably more on the payable side where the money's going out, and this is more big picture, I would think, but prevailing wage and the big talk now of complete repeal, where do you sit on that? Because ultimately, some of our dollars goes out that way.
Yeah.
And I guess that would affect us in another regard, but I'm just curious on where you sit. And another question to kinda go with that, is there anything that you're authoring or co-authoring or sponsoring in the near future that we might be of interest right here?
Well, I was a co-sponsor on the prevailing wage repeal bill last session. The good news is the governor has created that full, full repeal of the prevailing wage within his proposed budget. So I think it's got a higher likelihood of success, this go-around. I think it, it, I think it can make a significant difference in terms of where our resources are going, our tax dollars are going. Just to give you an idea, the kind of, you asked about a bill that I'm sponsoring or advocating for. To give you an idea of how entrenched are our, some of our representatives and senators' mindsets are, it doesn't directly affect McQuanago, but it does indirectly affect McQuanago, and that is a, what I call a Fairbox fairness bill. We've got maybe three dozen different transit authorities around the state. These are sort of quasi-governmental, quasi-business entities that they have customers, they serve those customers, they collect revenue from the customers, but they're heavily subsidized. Now, I'm a proponent of transit, I think transit has a key role in economic development. But what's interesting to me is that there is no limit on the amount of subsidy. There's, you would think there would be, like in a business, you operate a business, you have a bottom line and it forces accountability. If you don't make a profit, maybe you can stay in business because of your capitalization for two, three, four years, perhaps, based upon your business cash flow plan. But at some point in time, if you can't turn a profit, you have to make the existential decision to close shop, right? Well, these transit authorities don't have that bottom line. They're heavily subsidized, nor is there a minimum standard. So this Fairbox fairness proposal suggests that there ought to be a maximum amount of subsidy. It's both federal and state subsidy, as well as local subsidy, but I believe that those who are riding the transit systems themselves should contribute a certain percentage of the overall operating expenses. Now, I don't know exactly what that number should be. The bill itself proposes, proposes to increase that amount over a few years until it caps out at 25%, meaning 25% of the rev, of the operating expenses is covered by the revenue from those who are using the system, which means a maximum subsidy of 75%. Now, why am I telling you this story? Has absolutely nothing to do with education in McQuanago, as I know it doesn't have a transit system. Well, because that subsidy comes from us as taxpayers. If we send that money to a transit system in Fond du Lac, or a transit system in Superior, or a transit system someplace else, we're taking the dollars, we're sending our hard-earned tax dollars to Madison, who are then sending it someplace else. So I think there ought to be a certain fairness, and that if they can't get to 25% of their operating expenses through their own customers, then, then they need to maybe decide to close up, or they need to figure out a way to consolidate services or be, operate a little bit more efficiently. Well, I put that bill out for consideration, and that was about three weeks ago. So far, I've gotten a whopping three co-sponsors on that bill. Nobody wants to touch it. What? You mean, I'm gonna have to tell my district that they're gonna have to be accountable? No, I don't want to do that. That would be unpopular. One of the districts, one of the transit districts that would be affected by this bill is my very own district, right here, Waukesha, Waukesha Transit System. And I knew they were gonna be unhappy with me about it, but it's that kind of thing that we need to put on the table and have realistic conversations about for the future of this state. That we can keep doing things the way we've always done them, and that's safe, but it's not the best. When we have scarce resources to go around, we need in government to look at every last dollar and make sure we're doing the best that we can for our public. And if that means we have to make some tough decisions, we have to make some tough decisions. So I'm gonna be recirculating that bill. I've crafted a new argument, so to speak, a new sales pitch for it with some graphs and charts and so forth, and we're gonna be putting it back out there. But that's the kind of thing that, that we face in Madison, where, you know, it's, it's politically, let's find the politically expedient route as opposed to doing the things that we need to do. And that's an illustration of the kind of challenge that we're gonna face if we're gonna be able to change the funding process for schools.
Okay, and along with being in favor of raising the floor, if it will, another thing I have an issue with is charters and voucher schools. I'm completely for them, especially in Milwaukee where they're needed. However, when a child leaves a public school district and goes to one of them, the entire amount of the aid goes with them. Where we are, we don't have a lot of charters, we don't have a lot of private, we have a public charter here that we run. When a child comes in from another public district, like we have, we have over, we have 464 students coming in from other districts.
Wow.
We're shorted, $26, $2700.
I guess the question we're asking is for private voucher students, when they leave our district and go to another school outside the district, we send a certain amount of money. Get that number?
Send the $300 amount?
When we have an open enrollment student coming from Palmyra Eagle, or East Troy, or another district, we don't get the same amount of money for those public school, open enrollment students.
Right.
We don't understand the discrepancy between those two figures.
Right.
That, that would be a significant difference for our district, which does have a lot of students coming in, like Mary said, 460-plus students coming in for open enrollment. Not quite sure why those two numbers aren't the same. I think that's what you're saying, Mary? I'm not putting words in your mouth, I hope.
Yep, that's exactly right. Yep.
Give me those, give me those numbers again. I wanna write those down.
Tom, can you email it to you tomorrow, too?
Yeah, I'll email it. It's about $63, $6400 for a public student. That's what we receive when a student pulls in, but when a student goes to private school, it's about, it's different for K-8 versus K-12, but I think the K-8 number for private schools was about $7300. So there's a gap there.
Yeah.
I'll get you the exact numbers tomorrow.
And my answer? It's the government. I hate to say it, but I mean, it's, you know, having not been there for the creation of these crazy formulas, to sit here in a public meeting and try to defend it or explain it is next to impossible, the only thing I can do is to say, give me the information, and it's something I can, I can begin talking about and begin advancing for a solution.
That'd be great.
And the other thing I'd like you to keep an eye on is those DPI report cards. They've started to add formulas to keep Milwaukee's from going down and to keep ours from going up.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd just like someone to make sure there's some accountability there.
So can you give me some examples of those formulas?
Nick would know.
Right.
We can have Nick email you.
Good.
What they've done.
That would be good. I, we, you know, this, because DPI is sort of a, they're sort of separate, they, we have legislative oversight, but of course, the superintendent is elected separately. So the superintendent runs DPI the way he wants to run DPI until the legislature says, ah, you can't do that. So we're constantly kind of watching.
I just, I was impressed that we went to the report card system for schools and for school districts, and, you know, there's finally accountability and you can compare one district to the, another as much as you can, and now they're basically making them slowly null and void. I mean, they've moved one baby step, they'll move another, they'll move another. Is there anyone else?
I have one thing.
Yep.
Although this might be more personal in nature, I don't know that I represent the board, so maybe I should just send a letter. So I apologize, but here we are. So, as you move forward in your research, talking about, you know, six months, a five-year-old, this valuable time in life of learning, I'm gonna challenge you to look at the inverse research as well, and make sure that you see both sides, because there's a lot of research that says sometimes later is better.
And then to also.
Later for?
For better, learning, to be able to learn at a deeper, richer pace when they're older, that sometimes older is better, I'm not saying always, but also to challenge you to look at our children as more than just a workforce, they're not a commodity, that it's more than that. So as you're looking at workforce numbers, there's a lot that can be looked at within education, not simply just pushing education back earlier, because those are very tender years that I don't, it pains me to hear that being used as maybe an avenue for improving workforce. Cause those are very tender years that I don't, it pains me to hear that being used as maybe an avenue for improving workforce. When so much can be done outside of those young years. Now, I do know that there are achievement gaps in certain districts, I totally get it. But to throw it out there, that they're more than a commodity, they're more than a workforce, and there's lots of research that goes in both directions. I mean, there, we can find research for anything we wanna say these days. That's just how it works. So I'm just putting out a personal challenge, not necessarily from this board, but from me, um, to look at all of it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Cherry?
First, I wanna say, I think that your second time around, you've learned a lot from your first time, cause I was here when you came the first time, and you have more of a handle on what's going on than you did, so, I mean, that's just something I noticed.
Going in the right direction.
And then to piggy, piggy off of, um, what Erica said, when you started talking about, uh, the workforce, I thought you were possibly gonna go to the, in the direction of preparing students, like, or encouraging, um, the skills, the trades in high schools and in our middle schools, and giving more, um, in, looking into that, which would be the older kids when they can know what they want. And so I was hoping that you were possibly going in that direction, so I tend to agree. And there are, cause there are, being an industrial state that we had been, and knowing about the brain drain and all these things that we're doing, to find ways to get our kids more workforce prepared before they-
I, I think, you know, I didn't touch on that, because I think we're, we're really doing a lot of good things in that direction already. Um, and I'm very encouraged about it. I'm, I'm thrilled about the academic and career planning process now, uh, that's coming on board. I think that's, uh, enlightening students a little bit more about making career choices earlier in the process, which is huge. Um, there's, there's so much of a, a lack of awareness of what can I do, you know? So, uh, opening up their minds to the, the wide array of possibilities in terms of careers, and the opportunities that are out there is, is a critical step in that direction. Um, so I, I think that there's a lot of things, the Dual Enrollment Academy, I think there's a lot of things that are happening right now that are, that, that is, that are really good things. Um, we can always do more, and, uh, so if, if you've got ideas, I'm, I'm all ears. If there's something that we need on the state level to advance that, I'd like to hear it.
Well, when you're focusing in on trades and things like that, a lot of districts have gotten rid of those, because there's also the cost of trying to keep up with the CNC machines, the 3D printers, all these other things that are out there, the computers. So, we've been fortunate, and we've had the backing of our community remodeling the high school in the next two years, adding a lot of the emphasis into those areas. But funding help for districts to help train them in those areas wouldn't be a bad idea also. So, just directed at that, then you're really targeting your workforce.
Right.
And this may be something you probably don't know about yet. Um, last year, at the joint finance session for the budget, yes, I was watching it. And, um, they were talking about the trades and building on career readiness. And there was talk of a fund or a financing available to school districts who, who go into this. They were talking about, I mean, cause Eagle River and, uh, where did we go? Berlin, or the school district?
We went to Brilliant.
Brilliant. School district had done it.
Was it the Fab Labs?
The Fab, yes, the Fab Labs.
Yeah.
Is there anything out there like that, that we could apply for, any, due to that you-
Well, I would imagine you'd be just as eligible as any other school district for those. Uh, do you know, I don't know what the criteria is. Do you know anything about that?
I'd have to ask Nick, Nick Reikoff, our director of student learning, he'll, he'll, he'll be able to find out for us.
Okay, all right. Tim?
So, and, kinda what's been said already about the trades, but I, I got a feeling, you know, and I'm not trying to debate what you're saying, but I think there's a level of disconnection with what's really going on, because out there, there's a, there's a labor shortage when it comes to skilled trades. And not just the here and now, we're talking in the future. A lot of apprentices, apprentices, there's, there's not enough people qualified for it.
Right.
You know, we live in a society, an economy where it's cheaper for me to go to the big box store five minutes away that makes X widget halfway across the world than to buy the widget two blocks away that's made at the factory there. I mean, Wisconsin faces that. I mean, we, we need more technology businesses, but without having the trades and that emphasis at the, the earlier stages, high school, middle school, we're not gonna have that. We're just gonna end up being a, a service economy at the, the whim of every other world economy out there. So, I mean, and it's just kinda piggybacking what's everyone else saying, but, yeah, I, I don't know if I quite agree with you, but I, I think there's more there that can be done, and I, I think, I'd like to see personally, our, our great state do it.
I, I'm not sure if we disagree, but.
Okay, anyone else? All right.
All right. And, and I think, Tom, if you just want to, uh, run through that document there for Representative Allen, just so the board can see what we're talking about, too.
Okay, so, I'll go through this a little quickly here, but I gave you that, uh, that handout there, Mr. Allen, so, um, if we go past the title slide, uh, just to walk through the, the mechanics of the revenue limit. I know a lot of times that this math can be tricky and hard to understand, but I'm gonna boil it down to the most basics there. I picked out three school, uh, we have three school districts here. Uh, we use Sussex Hamilton because they're exactly the same size uh, as we are in this current school year, and then Franklin School District. Um, they're close by, they, you know, we buy for the same labor market and teachers and whatnot, so they're, they're a local, um, school district we, we could compare ourselves to. So you can see on the very first line, we have a revenue limit per member, and every school district has their own unique number. And we, on the next slide, I'll get to this in a second, I'll, I'll talk how we got to this number. But you can see that we're about, um, you know, we're far less than Sussex Hamilton, and, and even much more so, uh, than Franklin. We have five point five million dollars less than Sussex Hamilton for the exact same number of kids, because their revenue limit per member is so much greater than ours, at almost eleven hundred dollars more. And likewise with Franklin, who has over five hundred students, or just about five hundred less students than us, they have three point three million for essentially having a five hundred student, you know, elementary building less, like we have here. So going back in time, when we take a look at this, uh, when revenue limits were installed in ninety-three, ninety-four, every school district picked their number. And as you can see, to those who chose a very conservative number, this has been ongoing out for twenty-four years. Oh, I'm not quite sure that revenue limits were intended to last as long as they have. I know there was talk that these were only intended to last about five years, and they might sunset, but here we are, we still have them today. So you can kinda see the progression and the change of those three districts there. Okay? So, just talking here in the ninety-seventh Assembly District here, um, you can see the differences between ourselves and, uh, the other districts that you have, also compared to the state average. Um, we also have the graph for the eleventh Senate District, uh, for, uh, Mr. Noss's district here, and there's, uh, obviously is a wider area of land, so you can see the, the difference there with those districts, um, that we rank at the absolute very bottom there, um, in terms of his district. So, as we kinda take a step back and just look at southeast Wisconsin, uh, we're just one dollar north of West Bend. We're at ninety-two hundred dollars, and they're at ninety, uh, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, so we're both occupying the bottom there. And statewide, you can see how we stack up. So there's only, uh, thirteen districts that have a, a lesser number than we do. So, I guess one of the proposals that will, we ask for you to consider right now is that perhaps think about raising the, the minimum revenue limit per member. Currently, it sits at ninety-one hundred dollars on the, as I insert this blue vertical line. Um, I just chose ninety-four hundred arbitrarily, it could be any number, so long as it was greater than ninety-two hundred dollars per student. Um, that would give, you know, financial, uh, you know, um, more financial ability to the districts who have been fiscally prudent all this time for twenty-four years. And I think this recognizes and, and rewards those districts who have gotten by on the smallest budgets possible. So as you, as we talked earlier about the, the per pupil categorical aids, districts that are already collecting fifteen thousand dollars per student, do they really need it? Do they need it as much as we do? I'm sure there is a need, but who needs it more? Um, so, yeah, the first bullet point I have here for the proposals talks about raising that minimum, uh, per member revenue limit. Alternatively, we could consider, um, the categorical aids getting distributed, uh, with respect to perhaps the, the average number. The average per member revenue limit's ten thousand fifty-nine dollars, to those districts that are less than that. Perhaps they could get three hundred dollars a student, and those above it would get one hundred. Or, or, or really any type of metric that would, again, recognize the districts who are getting by on a smaller budget, and have done so again for twenty-four years. So, as you have your conversations, we just hope that you would, uh, consider those.
We'd like a decision tonight, correct?
I speak for the entire hundred thirty-two member of the Assembly and the Senate. I hereby declare-
I knew we invited you for a reason.
All right, are we good?
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
All right, my pleasure. Uh, my, uh, website is repallen.com, and right there, you can link to an email address. Uh, feel free to email my office, uh, with any other thoughts, ideas, questions, anytime.
All right, thank you.
Welcome your input. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Allen.
Have a great evening.
Appreciate it, you're welcome.
All right, next up, we have the student rep report.
All right. So for McQuanigo High School, um, the, we're just gonna do one per each, and then anything else, if you'd like to read later, you may. But, um, for the first one, for McQuanigo High School, on January twenty-third, um, students on the McQuanigo High School basketball team, as well as some of the younger grades, um, fourth grade through twelfth grade, participated in a free throw-a-thon, in which they helped raise, uh, fifteen thousand dollars for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, which is a huge, huge, um, win for them and the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Uh, for Parkview Middle School, um, in February, the Parkview Middle School student government members went, um, out into the neighborhoods of Linden Grove and played board games on delivered valentines for the residents. And then they also sent some homemade valentines for the veterans for the VFW post that's down the street over there. Um, and then moving to the back, at Big Bend Elementary, um, they are very blessed to have, um, I'm not gonna try to pronounce her name because I'll butcher it, but, um, this lady, she brings in two therapy, certified therapy dogs, Zappa and Capone, which are both Newfoundlands. And, um, what they do is they allow the opportunity for much of the younger students at Clarendon, um, to kind of socialize with the dogs, uh, be able to read to the dogs, and just provides an extra level of comfort, which I thought was a very interesting and a very awesome opportunity for these students.
So, so that name is Sue C. Shenowski, and I served on the library board with her for a number of years, so, great person.
Very nice name.
Yep.
I thought my last name was hard. Um, at Prairie View, the kindergarten classrooms will be having their circus on Friday, March tenth, and I was actually just reminiscing with my kindergarten teacher about my glory days as a tightrope walker and a baton twirler. So that's a really, that's a really cool event for the kids, um, and it sticks with them, so. The section fifth and sixth grade students had a concert on February second, and what was cool about that was that they were able to livestream the event and have people from all over the world watch it. Uh, which is not something that most elementary schoolers are able to say that they did, so that's a really cool opportunity for them. The Rolling Hills fifth graders will be celebrating Pie Day, um, and they'll be doing pie and math-related activities throughout the fifth grade classrooms, and of course, everybody's favorite part, they'll get to eat pie while they do it. And last week, Clarendon students took part in the Sixteenth Annual Jump Rope for Heart Event. Uh, that number is actually supposed to be eighteen hundred, so that's how much they raised this year, which brings their sixteen-year total to fifty-three thousand four hundred, um, which is huge to an event to fight against heart disease and stroke. So that's an awesome opportunity for the kids to be able to partake in that. And there's also a lot going on in the 4K classes, so there are a bunch of cool pictures there that you guys can take a look at, all the activities that they're, they're doing, so.
All right, thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments? Any citizens' comments? All right.
Nope.
We're good. All right, onto the consent agenda. We have approval of board minutes, board minutes of February thirteenth, thirteenth, twenty seventeen, I can't talk. And approval of vouchers, numbers one-one-zero-seven-three-one to one-one-one-three-one-four in funds ten, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-seven, forty-one, forty-five, forty-nine, fifty, seventy-two, and eighty, totaling three million and change, and receipts for January twenty-seventeen in funds ten, twenty-one, twenty-seven, forty-one, fifty, and seventy-two, totaling seventeen million and change. Are there any questions or concerns regarding these? All right, hearing, now, now it's approved by consent. Next up, we have action items, resignations, retirements.
There are none tonight.
None, all right. School start date resolution.
So we have the resolution documents on page twenty-five and twenty-six of your packet. And so we talked about this last meeting. I had a couple of samples from some other districts in the WASB sample. And said that we would bring back one more tailored to the McQuanigo School District, so that's what we have here. As you can see, it's in sort of legal language.
Whereas, whereas.
Yeah, a lot of wheres, and so, if, if there's something on here you're uncomfortable with, I'll be happy to change it, but for the most part, uh, these are the reasons that we've talked about in the past. So, for example, we believe that the start of the school date, the establishment of the calendar, should be a locally, uh, school board decision, a school board that's elected locally, that they should be making that decision. Talks about having more time for students who are taking AP exams, that having a start date before September one, such as Catholic Memorial had this past year, August seventeenth, that would give our kids two more weeks of instruction to prepare for those AP exams. Guys have AP exams coming up, uh, first two weeks of May.
Yes.
Either of you in AP chemistry this year? No, you guys don't have AP chemistry this year. Claire has AP chemistry, uh, first, uh, first test, uh, May first. And so, obviously, if she had started school on August seventeenth, she would've had ten more days of instruction to prepare for that exam. So, that's one of the reasons. Another reason that we have in here, again, in the legal language, we'd like to have our first semester completed prior to Christmas break. So right now, our first semester at the high school, we start on September one. Yeah, kids take a, about a ten-day break for Christmas, then they come back, have a couple of weeks of instruction, and then you take your semester exams. We would prefer to have schools starting earlier, and have that first semester completed prior to the Christmas break.
Another benefit to that would be, um, that there wouldn't, you know, after AP exams, the AP classes just kinda do projects, or not really, there's nothing really for them to learn anymore, they've done what they've prepared for. So that would also eliminate the kinda superfluous weeks and projects that, that, that the AP classes would be doing.
So that's some of the rationale, and if, if you had any questions about the document, we'd be happy to answer those questions, interpret it, and then on the back, we have- Well, since, um, Don's not here tonight, we're gonna take his name off and change, depends upon the vote. I don't want to presume that it's gonna be eight-nothing, but if it would be eight-nothing, I'd have to change that language to eight-nothing, and then I'd have you sign it at the next meeting. There, there really is not a rush for this. There, there's not gonna be debate on the floor with this bill anytime soon. I don't even know that it's gonna get to committee. But the more districts that write the resolutions and pass them on to their legislators, the better chance that it will happen.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Okay, the ayes have it. Next up, we have our policy reviews.
So we looked at these last month, I'm sorry, uh, earlier this month, on February thirteenth, and there weren't any concerns at that time regarding the policies themselves.
Okay.
Unless there's a concern now, I would recommend that you approve them as-is, and if you read them last time, you'll know that the vast majority of the policy language is legal language.
All right, do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
All right, Cherry?
Second.
Second is Erica. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? All right, motion carries. Onto committee reports. First up is Finance and Facilities, the MHS project update.
Kurt's here tonight to provide an update, and we're gonna have some exciting stuff happening at McQuanigo High School very soon. And unfortunately for our board reps, life's gonna get a little more difficult for them.
And we don't get to see any of the benefits.
That is true. Do you have younger siblings? Yeah, Max, you have a younger sibling.
I got a younger brother, but he's going to France next year, so he won't be able to see the beginning part of safety.
They're kicking him out.
Yeah.
I didn't know that, that's awesome.
I put together a project update. I noticed it wasn't in the board packet. I'll pass it around unless, oh, you received it separately?
Who, who is this? So Kurt Weeblehaus.
Weeble, oh, I-
May have heard about the subdivision that he's developing.
He's building a barn or something.
Oh, yes. So I'll pass the, the project update around, but I'll give you a quick summary of, uh, of what has happened last couple, few weeks since the last update that I provided, and then, is it in there? Yeah, oh, what is it? I'm sorry, all right, I just missed it then. Now you have a second copy. Um, so, we are just finishing up the bidding phase right now. Uh, the bidding phase started after the design phase, which was right, right at the beginning- Uh, the bidding phase started after the design phase, which was right, right at the beginning of January is when we went out to bid. Bidding was about, uh, it took about a little over three weeks, almost four weeks, uh, we had out four bid. Uh, bids came in and, uh, initial bid day tabulation, we were under budget by about two-point-eight percent. So that's very good news. Since the bids came in at the end of, uh, end of January, uh, early, actually, early February is when the bids came in, from that point to now, uh, we've been going through a scope review process. Very valuable, uh, period to bring the, the low one, two, or three bidders in for each work category and talk through, um, their scope, make sure they're complete, trying to prevent, uh, the unknowns when we're actually in construction. Um, one of the other big values, value, values to do in that process as well is you have these bidders that have been digesting these drawings, and they come up with different ideas as well, and we find ways we can, uh, value engineer or find efficiencies in addition to what, uh, what the bid documents have. So, been a very valuable process, uh, been getting a lot of great feedback from these bidders that we went out to bid at the right time, because right now, just as we're meeting with these people, they're saying they're just swamped with bids right now, and, and when they get swamped with bids, um, they either won't bid, or they will add, add to it because their, their, uh, their job list is getting filled up. So, uh, it was a good confirmation as we've been sitting with, with these contractors. In the last three weeks, we spent, uh, between myself and CG Schmitt's been, uh, handling, uh, all the meetings up in their office, so I've been going up to their office. But, um, we've had over forty meetings with, uh, these low bidders, right? So at an hour each, you can see it's a very time-consuming process, but like I said, very valuable process. So, um, we started with scope reviewing, uh, the, the trades that are, um, critical path or are gonna be on-site first. So, we've went through our earthwork, site utilities, asphalt, precast, concrete, site concrete, carpentry, steel, masonry, electrical, HVAC, plumbing, fire protection, and fireproofing, elevators, um, as well. So, uh, we're ahead of schedule, I'd say, on the buy-out, buy-out, buying out these contracts. We are, uh, we're ahead of schedule there, which is great to have it this much, uh, this much complete before we actually break ground. We have awarded the excavation, site utilities, asphalt, concrete, precast, masonry, and site utility, uh, site concrete. So I mentioned that we, we came in on bid day, uh, two-point-eight percent below. Uh, when we went out to bid, uh, actually, when we went through the design process, there is, there were as many items in there that was, oh, yeah, that'd be really nice to do that, as we start digging in, talking to staff, it'd be nice to do this or do that, but we wanted to be cognizant of scope creep, we didn't want to just add it to the project. So there's a number of items that we put out there as, as bid alternates. So, being under budget allows us to, um, look at those alternate bids and, um, determine if we wanna proceed with some of those, um, some of those as well. So, um, that is a nice position to be with, because we also had, just in case we were over budget, we also had some bid alternate deducts, uh, so it's nice not to have to cut anything from the project. So, a, a couple of the items that, that are, that are easy, uh, in, in a high degree of, um, really desirable to do that we did as a bid alternate was, um, our interactive lecture hall. Uh, if you remember, the, the band room, the existing band room was, uh, going to be a storage area. Um, as we went through the process, it was like, well, it'd be great to have a medium-sized space. You know, we have classrooms that are smaller size space, we have the auditorium is a large-size space, a medium-size space to have, um, a lecture hall, a hundred-and-fifty, a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-fifty people, um, in there. And it ties into actually, uh, um, I think another agenda item on here as far as, uh, some virtual learning and stuff like that. Just a space to, uh, to have that flexibility and have technology in, in our room. So, that's, uh, uh, alternate that we definitely are going to, uh, look at going forward with. Uh, another alternate that, uh, that I think we wanna talk a little bit more about, and I'll let, uh, Sean talk a little more about that, is, is the tennis court, um, lighting, uh, for the tennis courts. That was a bid alternate, um, that is, that's an option for us that we have to decide whether we wanna go forward with that or not. So what's happening in the next two weeks? Um, next two weeks, we are, this week, we're gonna be scope reviewing roofing, wall panels, glass and glazing, and, uh, and really the rest of the packages, which there's, there's not many left after that. Uh, on the second, so this Thursday, we are setting, starting demolition up in the, uh, tech, uh, technology room and, uh, project lead-the-way room. Um, we, they were able to vacate those spaces, um, at semester time, and allows us to get up in that, uh, in that area to get, get a jump on things. It's gonna be a very, very busy summer, um, with, with everything we have going on, so getting a jump on that will be helpful. Uh, then on Friday of this week, um, there's no school on Friday, so we're gonna take advantage of that day to reroute our front entrance in, in front of the high school. So, obviously, the auditorium is getting built in front, we'll be putting, uh, construction fencing where the, around that future auditorium. And, uh, and then the traffic, rather than driving past the front of the school, will be still coming in that middle entrance. Uh, we'll be looping, dropping off kids, um, in front of the door number two, and then going back out that same middle entrance. Uh, so, we'll change that traffic pattern on Friday, and then Monday will be the, will be the first, uh, test to see how well we planned, uh, and how many challenges will be present. So, um, we're, we're, we're afraid we're gonna have some tweaks to, to make, but we, uh, did, uh, Jason did, did a very good job with just, you know, working with, I think it was a key club, uh, doing a, a traffic study, uh, to understand how much traffic's gonna be coming through there, and hopefully, uh, prepare to it, uh, to the best of, uh, the best we can. I think, uh, the high school will be setting a shout point out tomorrow with that new traffic pattern. Uh, then the sixth, which is a week from today, will be, uh, we'll start seeing some, some activity. Uh, I, I say the week of the sixth, I don't know if it'll for sure happen on that first Monday that we'll start seeing, uh, excavation. Like I said, fencing will go up on Friday, um, but the, but Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm, I'm expecting that we'll start seeing, uh, shovel in the ground, uh, somewhere around that. And then the ninth, which is a week from this Thursday, is our, is our ceremonial groundbreaking that, uh, that we'll be doing. And, and I know, uh, um, Sean and, and Jim and Julie have been, uh, putting together some invites for, uh, the newspaper and, and other people that, uh, including yourselves, that we'd like to, uh, hopefully make that groundbreaking, so.
Are your speed wagons coming, I heard, Sean?
Yes, absolutely. More importantly, you all get your own hard hat. With your name on it.
Any questions? So far, it's been going very well, I'm still waiting for the big, there's gonna be challenges, there's no doubt. We just haven't encountered, uh, any big ones yet, it's, there's certain, we haven't broke ground either, but, um, I mean, it's been a, quite a process up to this point as far as design, and we're, we're hoping that, uh, the thorough process, and I, and I, I am very happy with the team that we have. I feel like we have a great synergy between our architect, our construction manager, and then us, I just feel like we're all working in the same direction, so. Um, but I don't want you to think that there's not gonna be problems, there will be problems, it's just, uh, how we ma, we just have to manage them and, and communicate through them and get, and, and, and get through them. But, uh, so far, it's been, been very good.
Any questions?
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Good luck on the anger hood.
Thank you.
So, so actually, Kurt, if you, why don't we just have that conversation about?
With the tennis courts?
Yeah. So, those of you who are on the, the citizens' committee, remember at one time, we talked about moving the tennis courts. And at that time, uh, we decided that we weren't going to do that, and that the field, or I'm sorry, the field house, the gymnasium was going to be in the original location, which was in the southwest corner of our building. Then, uh, for a variety of reasons, we decided to move the gymnasium to the northwest corner of our building. When we moved the gym there, then we had to move the tennis courts. The cost for the, uh, moving the tennis courts as opposed to the resurfacing or, what's the correct term for redoing the tennis court?
Repaving, it was repaving.
Repaving. What, there was not that much of a difference, those tennis courts were very old, they're not in good shape, they, they needed to be addressed. However, what we did not talk about, when we moved the gymnasium and thus moved the tennis courts, was lighting. We do not have lighting at this time on our tennis courts. We strongly believe we should have lighting at our tennis courts. The question is, and we don't need a decision on this tonight, and we can come back with more details, but if we do proceed with lighting, where should that funding come from? Should that be taken out of the referendum monies, or should we take a look at fund balance? Approximate cost?
Uh, it's about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
So.
So, I guess before we start even talking about where to throw money at, I'd like to see all the options. I mean, if we just say something that's pretty niche, and I'm, you know, tennis, how many students actually play tennis? You know, compared to something that could benefit the school as a whole? I guess I'd like to see what options are there before I, I really make that decision. But, I don't know, how much money's left in your fund for? All right, 'cause I know we took money from the softball court, or you, the, the school, the district took money from the softball court, or, um...
Softball field.
Softball field.
Yeah.
It was something like that, you know?
Yes, yes.
But I guess, how much is left in your kitty there?
You're talking the operational funds for buildings and grounds? It's not my kitty anymore, it's Brian's kitty.
Okay, all right, all right.
But, um, yeah, it's something that scale, it, it just, I guess I don't, I'd have to see where he's at in his budget, but typically, you know, right now, where, actually where he's at right now, um, I was, I was working with him a little bit, going, he, at this time of the year, we go from school to school to school, and talk through, what are your priorities, Mr. Principal or Ms. Principal? What are your priorities for your school? And then we put it all in a list, right? And, and we never, we never can do everything on that, on that list. But we basically put it on a list, we can prioritize of what we feel, um, is gonna have the, the best impact. So, he's in that process right now, um, and probably won't have that list finalized, uh, until probably the end of March, um, in time, so we can get bids out for the summer. Um, so, I expect that his funds will be used up for, for those type of projects.
So you don't need, you don't need a decision, a decision tonight, but we could, we have a chance to talk about it at an upcoming meeting, I take it?
Uh, y- yes, it can be at an upcoming meeting, if, if the desire is to have it, um, if the desire is to have the lights for the opening of, uh, tennis season, um, it would be, it would be, at the very least, desirable to get the bases in. Uh, just, we have to, um, the, before we actually coat the asphalt, we'd like to get the bases in, right? So, so we're not doing a patch after the fact. Um, so, yes, it would be something that would be desirable to, to do sooner or later. We're awarding contracts right now, and, and, uh, and they're looking at putting the surface in as soon as the weather breaks. Uh, so at the end of May, they're looking at, um, getting the, getting the, uh, uh, surface down. And there's a lead time to this, uh, to those bases, they, they aren't, they aren't cast-in-place bases, they're, they're precast bases that come from Musco lighting. So, um, if you say at the next, uh, at the next, uh, meeting, two weeks from now, that'd be fine.
We can bring back some more information at the next meeting?
And, is there such a thing as, like, that the bases, I mean, where you could do the bases, and then, I mean, is there a cost?
You'd run the utilities first, I think.
Right. But I mean, to put them in there just in case in the future, and would it be a lot less? Because I'm sure the things above ground cost probably the majority of money.
Yeah, you can put the bases in, uh, and, and leave it, we would, if we went that approach, we'd use a different system than the Musco system, we'd use a different base. The Musco system that we have in the base bid right now, it's a, it's, it's a precast piece of concrete that goes in, into the ground, and then sticks up eight feet in the air, and then, and then there is eight-foot plus or minus, I don't know the exact dimension, and then the pole slides over the top. If we were to say, let's just proceed with bases, we would change the system to be a, a standard, kind of similar to like a parking lot pole base, where it's just a thirty-six-inch diameter concrete that's only sticking out of the ground, uh, you know, three feet. Um, so, that way you don't have a big concrete piece sticking out of the ground, so, so that's a possibility.
Cherry?
Um, this just happened to come up, so, um, what are we looking at for the rest of our lighting? The reason I ask, I had someone come to me, um, we had put some new LEDs or whatever kind you put towards the back of the building, back of the stadium. You know which lights I'm talking about, that kinda come out there.
On the far west side, you're saying?
The far west side.
Yep.
And then, as you come around the parking lot, the lighting isn't good, never has been, and there are, there is no lighting on the, um, N-N side of that parking lot. And so even if we would have cameras out there, if something would happen, there's not enough lighting that we would be able to see what's going on. So, then we're putting in our new parking lot, so what is the plan for parking lot lighting all the way back to those, um, tennis courts overall? I mean, are we looking at, so would there be some way where this is all together, or?
Yeah, yeah, so there is, there's new light poles, if you notice, just district-wide, if you notice, every school but the high school has, now has LEDs, right? We upgraded all the LEDs throughout the district, purposely left the high school because we, we were making changes to the high school. Uh, so, so those will all be updated to LED as well. The parking lot, uh, going to the west, um, there will be, um, uh, an island of, of lights that will kind of be on the center, that will go up past where the new entrance is. So, we got the middle entrance there right now, that middle entrance is gonna get moved down to the west, basically in line with where the front entrance to the, the new gym is. Okay, so, so there'll be an island of lights right down the center of that lot up to that point. And then as you continue to go further west, the existing light poles that are on the south side, so between the parking lot and, uh, track, um, those light poles will be replaced with, uh, the poles will stay, but the, the lighting will be replaced with an LED light. Um, so, that will, that will be led all the way, all the way to the, uh, third lot. And then when you get to the third lot, the existing lights that are shining kind of horizontally, um, are planned to remain.
So will those LED lights cast light farther towards N-N? Farther west, not north?
To make it, uh, I don't know that they will make it any further than the existing lights, maybe, not significantly, I'll say. Not significantly, um, so beyond, right now, the lights that are there get the five-foot candles, uh, which is required at a, at a parking lot, but I don't see them getting much brighter, they're, with them becoming LED, I expect they're gonna become brighter, but not, not significant, I don't think you'd be significantly notice a, a difference.
So, like I said, this person was concerned about the lighting overall, so if they're not gonna be any better, then that doesn't address the concern of the lighting on that side. I mean, it just kinda came up with if we're doing lighting there.
I, so, so, um, we will, we will have the adequate lighting according to the standards that the IESNA puts out, uh, for parking lots, which is five-foot candles, I, I believe it's five-foot candles. We will have, we will meet that requirement, so, like anything in a, in a construction project, people have their own opinions one way or the other. Um, but, but we won't, we'll, we'll meet that many, minimum, um, at that second parking lot.
The second parking lot is the parking lot that's adjacent to the current tennis courts? Is that considered the second parking lot?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And that one now will have lights in the center?
That will have lights in the center up to the, the, the new entrance coming in, so yes, right in front of the gym, that absolutely will be, will be lighter. But I think you're referring to more further, further to the west, right? Uh, kinda like where the track is?
Well, between the tennis courts and the track, that strip of parking.
Yeah.
I mean, because those, because of those, those, uh, I mean, the tennis courts are gonna come out, so I would think that somewhere in this whole process, there must be a difference in lighting, 'cause is that gonna be building or a new parking?
So that area right there, absolutely.
They'll have to have more light.
Yes, that area will absolutely be, be brighter, right there, because that's building, that's new parking lot, so that will get more lights there. When you, when you go all the way down to where the, the second lot meets the third lot, that's the existing poles that will remain, and, and new LEDs will be there, but you're not gonna notice a significant differ, difference all the way down west. Close to the building, absolutely, it'll be much, much brighter in that area.
Let's bring the map to the next meeting, we can take a look at that in more detail.
Okay, and was it two hundred and twenty, is that what you said?
Two twenty.
Tim?
Um, contingency fund, what's the existing contingency fund? And I'm assuming this two-point-eight is on top of that, right?
Um, the two-page, yes, that is, uh, so we have a contingency fund in the project. Um, they carried seven percent in the renovated areas and three percent in the new construction areas.
Alright.
Um, so I have to, I don't know what that, what that, I have to, I have to get back to you with it.
No, I just, about just.
Yeah. In that contingency fund, we control that piece of it. So as, as, any project is gonna have unknowns that come up. So anytime there is an unknown that comes up, the construction manager comes to us and explains to what they came across. We look at it and say, okay, that, that looks appropriate, or no, no, that doesn't look appropriate.
Anyone else?
So to recap, we need to decide if we want lighting on the tennis courts or not.
Not right now.
No. But think about it, over, because let's decide soon. And either we're paying for it out of some sort of fund balance, or out of the two-point-eight percent.
Correct.
Amount, and there is enough there?
There is.
But then that would eliminate the possibility of other items that were on the wish list.
So I, I think you're, you're, the first thing we have to decide is if we should have the lights or not. And so I think that's a good discussion to have next time. And then if that answer is yes, where does the funding come from? And we could also throw in fundraising there too.
And in between time, I think everybody should walk over there, behind there, and see how light that is over there.
Well, and could there be, could we have more information on some of the other things that we?
So parking lot lights, I think is what, now Art, you're referring to.
The whole area back there.
Okay. So the, the tennis court lights or something separate from what you're saying? So there aren't a lot of tennis courts in, in our ninety square miles. And so I think that, that's something to think about, but we'll talk about that next.
Okay.
We need to explore naming rights for the lighting. Art's gonna sell naming rights for everything.
Bright kids.
It's gonna be first.
Well, and that's.
Do we have a second?
I'm not in charge of that.
My second.
That's another, that's another discussion we'll be having soon too, naming rights for and advertising in the, uh, building. Not tonight, but.
Alright, any other questions for Kurt?
Thanks Kurt.
Thank you Kurt.
Thank you Kurt.
Okay, next up is the twenty seventeen eighteen budget update presentation.
Alright, so I'm gonna take the next two bullet points and collapse them and do them together at the same time. Alright, so earlier in, I think it was September, October, I gave you the exhibits that I, I updated and gave to you once again. So I'm just trying to ultimately create a great deal of transparency with our current twenty sixteen seventeen budget. So in the board packet on pages twenty-nine through thirty-one, I, excuse me, from pages twenty-eight through thirty-one, I am trying to give you an update of all of our funds, the budgets we adopted back in October, and where those budgets are at currently today. So we're about sixty-two percent of the way through the school year and uh, which gives us thirty-eight percent of the school year still in front of us. So as a general rule of thumb, we're looking for about thirty-eight percent of the, of the dollars in these budgets to be left. And when that isn't the case, we ask the question why. So I've gone through that. Um, for the most part, supplies, for example, are something that are, you know, uniformly used throughout the year. There's never really a spike in supplies or, or, you know, a plateau, it just kinda consistently supplies are used. So as we go through this here, I guess I'll draw your attention to uh, to the screen here and I'll walk us through it. So, alright, here we go. So the actual, the budget expenditures that I gave to you in the board packet is something I'll review about every two weeks as we close down this current budget year. And just kinda keep our eyes to make sure that we're on budget or under budget as best we can be. Um, I created a, about forty-six pages of, of a report that I distribute out to administrators and people who oversee parts of the budget, be it Kelly Kavneski with technology, um, or whoever that might be. And I communicate that with those administrators, so they understand what piece of the budget that they're responsible for and, and monitoring. So I've communicated with everybody throughout the district that we're looking to wrap up all of our expenditures by March twenty-fourth, so that we can get a understanding of where the budget will shake out and give us some time as we wrap up the sixteen seventeen budget year. Uh, on the screen there, on the right-hand side, you can kinda see the various budget areas as we create this budget. There's, there's a lot of different parts to it and, um, I communicate with those people who oversee those parts, so they know where things stand. Um, with the, so the, the document I gave you all is just, that's in your board packet rather, is just a high-level overview of those numbers there, okay? Um, the handout that just came your way, I just gave you a quick example of our salary projection. And what I do is I look month to month to say, how much money did we spend in Fund Ten for salaries? And how much did we spend for benefits, be it medical or OPEB, dental, all those various fringe benefits? So I will, I compare those, you know, through the end of February to say, where are we now? And where were we at this time last year and the previous years? So as I make those comparisons, I feel good about where we are. Salaries and benefits are clearly our biggest expenditure. So this is really gonna be the part of the, the budget that would have the greatest influence one way or the other. So I just wanted to share that with you to show you how I go about thinking about this and review that stuff. I just, again, wanna create some transparency here with the, uh, with the sixteen seventeen budget and where we're at right now. I'll review the major expenditures, such as salary benefits, um, our cost for hiring teacher substitutes. There's really no way at the beginning of the year, when we create the budget, to understand how, how much will we utilize substitute teachers and what that need will actually be. So we make our best guess and then we kinda measure it periodically throughout the year. Uh, other big-ticket costs, I, I monitor directly our transportation costs. I think transportation costs are our fourth biggest line item, um, but I pay attention to these things just to make sure that we're on track. Okay? Um, on the screen here now, a- and at the back end of this presentation, I'll give you a little bit more detailed numbers. But right now, what I'm saying is that the original budget called for use of fund balance of a hundred seventy-five thousand in Fund Ten. And currently, I anticipate that there's gonna be a surplus due to the OPEB funding that I, we've talked about quite a bit now. Um, somewhere between seven hundred fifty and one million dollars, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand and one million dollars. Again, mostly due to OPEB funding. So when we created the budget, again, there were some things that were unforeseen, such as the work that was done at Claridan and the special ed rooms. Um, that wasn't a part of the original budget. And things like that will move the budget in the final position up and, up or down. But right now, we anticipate having a surplus. Um, as we go throughout March and April, I'll be in communications with you on how we could best use this money and where that money, um, could ultimately be used. We'll give you the options and we'll make a decision on what we could do with this. Okay? But right now, again, that OPEB has given us a good position to be in. So is there any questions there as we just kinda quickly review the sixteen seventeen budget? We doing okay? Alright, so going into seventeen eighteen, um, these are the original assumptions that we used to create the first budget that I, I gave you in January. So on this screen here, you're gonna see two things that I'll change to red. Uh, on the left-hand side, the two hundred per, two hundred fifty per pupil categorical aid. We're gonna change that there and look at a couple scenarios where we go from two fifty per student and increase that by one hundred dollars in each of the next two upcoming fiscal years. Uh, the governor's budget is currently calling for going up to four hundred fifty dollars per pupil. So in other words, a two hundred dollar increase in seventeen eighteen and then another two hundred dollars. Actually, it's two hundred and four dollars to be exact, but, um, going up to six hundred and fifty dollars in the eighteen nineteen school year. Um, as Mr. Allen said when he was here, this is a real, it could be considered a reelection budget. Uh, whether we actually get that money or not is, remains to be seen and we're just gonna kinda play it cautious. But I'll show you the differences between what those two scenarios will give us. And likewise, if we adopt a, a OPEB funding strategy that equates to about six hundred fifty thousand annually going forward, which is much different than what we've done in years past. So as we go into that math here, uh, obviously in the blue there, we have the current school year. I said previously that we would have, anticipate having a surplus between seven hundred fifty thousand and perhaps one million. Um, the exact numbers show you where that surplus would be if thing, if the budget shakes out exactly as we think it might, okay? Now, that, those numbers definitely will change, I guess the question is to what extent will they change? But that's the, the nine hundred and twelve thousand, we'll be discussing how we could best repurpose that money for the current school year. And then that, uh, in the seventeen eighteen school year, that is the number we would wanna repurpose on an ongoing basis. So clearly, I don't think we're gonna take the current year surplus and hire people in the middle of the school year. Things are kind of in their place, the haze in the barn. So I think there's certain strategies we would wanna consider, how we could use that in the current school year, which is different than an ongoing manner.
The haze in the barn. Haze in the barn.
You know, we used to have a lot of farm land around here.
Is that for Kurt?
I'm sorry, it's. Thought the analogy was okay and appropriate, no?
We're not just farms anymore.
We're just looking for entertainment.
Kurt, alright, Kurt liked it, the agrahood guy liked it, so. That's for you Kurt. Alright. Alright, going into adding to that scenario now, really the right-hand column is gonna change. So we could see what would happen if we went from two hundred fifty dollars per, per uh, pupil for categorical aid up to three fifty in the seventeen eighteen school year. And you can see that we went from nine hundred thirty-seven thousand up to almost one point four million. Now, if that were to become even higher and we got the full allotment that the governor is proposing, that would go, grow up to one point eight. So I have, I'm proceeding with caution, I guess, I'd like to see it happen. But I will, we'll wait and see how this thing ultimately shakes out, okay? I think on a preliminary basis right now, if you take a look at the mill rate, the, the bottom number there, in the current school year, we had a, we taxed at a rate of eight dollars and eighty-two cents per a thousand dollars of assessed, uh, of equalized value, excuse me? That we're perhaps going to drop that as we look ahead. So that being said, there's, there's some moving parts in there. Um, the current school year that we're in, the sixteen seventeen school year, is going to be the highest amount that we will levy for Fund Thirty-nine as part of the long-term strategy we adopted with Robert W. Baird and, and Lisa Voison, who's attended our meetings in the past here. Um, we're gonna begin to hit a long-term stride that's gonna occur in about the eighteen nineteen school year, where it's consistently three point three million is what we'll levy. This past year, it was four point eight million. So that's gonna come down and then we hit a long-term stride. So that's why you're seeing the taxes potentially gonna be dropping here as we enter the seventeen eighteen year. Okay? So that's it, that's the, the update right now. Um, I guess we're really just kinda keeping our eye on what occurs with the per pupil categorical aids, knowing that every hundred dollars represents about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars to our district.
Just really wanna stress, that's a very rosy picture there and we've been through this process before. And some of the other legislators that we have talked to said that Governor Walker's proposal is, as Representative Allen said, that is a reelection budget. And that they, because of the transportation cha- uh, funding challenges that they have, they don't see that two hundred dollars coming to fruition. Thus, our continued message to those legislators that if it's not gonna be two hundred dollars for every student and as that goes lower, they should be taking a look at distributing that money to the neediest districts. So, we, we won't be spending that surplus anytime in near future.
Alright, any questions? Alright, let's move on. Next up, Learning Committee, Academic and Career Planning Report.
Yeah, so Tim Lemke is back to continue his discussion about the ACP, or Academic Career Planning, uh, program. And Representative Allen mentioned it earlier in his presentation. And we also have Eric here tonight. Eric's one of our special education instructors at Maguano High School and he's gonna add some information too.
Actually, I'm gonna have Eric jump in on, um, the bulk of it. Um, Eric is, uh, if you guys don't know Eric, he's our department chair for the Special Education Department at the high school. Um, he's also sitting in on the Academic and Career Planning Committee, um, and helping work through some of that process with that, um, change taking place and we have to implement starting next year. Um, we've had brief information about the middle school, but at a future board meeting, we'll have the middle school come and present a little bit about how that's gonna impact the middle school and their academic and career plans. So, here's Eric.
Alright. Um, I guess to start off, we are in compliance with what DPI is asking us to do. So right now, they really wanna see a plan posted. If you go to the website, um, under the guidance link on the high school webpage, there's a link to the Academic and Career Planning kind of vision that the high school has. And it kind of outlines what we're currently doing, where we'd like to go. A lot of what we would like to do all depends on the, uh, schedule that gets chosen for us in the future as we go through that renovation process and then looking at changing up from the seven-hour day to explore some other scheduling, um, options if we get a, um, advisory period in there and we can do a lot of other stuff. Um, right now, what we have done is we've worked to align all of our courses to career clusters. So that, uh, has happened the last couple of years now. Uh, so when the students go on and start to register for courses, they can actually search by career cluster. Um, so if they're interested in, let's say, a health occupations career, they can look under the section that's outlined for health occupations and see all the courses that Maguano High School has to offer that would help, uh, them in that process of pursuing that. Uh, this year, we also linked up with WCTC and created a career cluster partnership program. So we have somebody that comes from WCTC, uh, and he meets with groups of students and helps them kind of explore, uh, career options and then helps them see what institutions are out there that can help them get further training or education. Even though it's through WCTC, they, he doesn't just promote WCTC, he really helps the students look to see what the best option is. So if it is on the job training or some sort of, uh, apprenticeship-type program, they could explore those options as well, uh, not just push, um, higher education. Uh, we've surveyed the entire staff at the high school, just to kinda see what things they're already doing, um, so that they don't start to think that this is something extra that they're gonna have to try to implement. We want them to see that it really is part of what they're already doing in their classroom. So if they take field trips, if they have guest speakers, uh, the community connections that they have, um, with people coming in or the students going out into the community. Um, and so we just got a bunch of feedback from that and the committee is gonna kinda sit down and take a look at that and then see how we can help guide, uh, the staff through this process going forward. Um, we have also explored the Inspire, uh, platform, which is a add-on link to the Career Cruising, uh, website. It, uh, really helps form a strong basis for community partnerships and collaboration. Um, and so we're hoping we can get those community connections that the high school already has, linked up through that platform and then even work to expand those. It'll give kids a great opportunity to reach out and do some job shadowing, some career exploration. There are coaches that are available. So if they're interested in a cur- uh, certain career path, they can go on and find a career coach in that path. It might be somebody that's at a, uh, that works on there. So like I know GE, uh, they have a lot of career coaches available. So, so somebody could click on and they could have virtual conversations with somebody from GE and get some, uh, feedback and information on that. Staff can also use it to help bring in more guest speakers or help students make other connections. Um, and so we're hoping to do a small pilot of that with a small group of students this spring. Uh, when I talked with Ron, uh, who's our administrator, that's kinda helping to oversee the academic and career planning process, uh, he said that we're in the final stages of wrapping up the agreement with the Inspire, uh, software, so that we can hopefully roll that out this spring. Um, we've kinda taken a look to see what other high schools are doing in terms of the ACP process. Uh, there are several high schools that have piloted, uh, different portions of it for the state. Um, and so we're kinda looking and seeing what they're doing. A lot of them are having students build portfolios. So this process does start in sixth grade and they can start, uh, at, at that level and then continue to build their portfolio. So then when they, uh, become seniors, they have a real nice, uh, solid basis of all sorts of different, uh, information and background to help them and hopefully at that point then, they'll have been able to make a really well-informed decision in terms of a future career. Um, and then we're also looking to try to continue to explore aligning courses with their career clusters and possibly look to develop opportunities similar to our IT Academy, but in some of those other career choices. So there was talk even this evening about the, um, renovation and how positive it'll be for our, uh, technology and engineering, uh, area of the school. And so once all of that is done, there's some great opportunity there to, um, build a program similar to IT Academy, where we can get kids involved in apprenticeships and, um, those types of things in that field as well. So a lot of things we're looking at, um, a lot of things that we hope we can do, um, and a big chunk of it will just. and a big chunk of it will just kind of depend on how we roll out once we see the new schedule that we're working with.
Alright, does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
So, just an update on Eric, Eric Weir, everyone, MHS grad. And how long have you been with us now, Eric?
This is my third year.
Third year, and you were at Oak Creek prior to this?
I was, and I was a paraprofessional here while I was getting my undergraduate.
Right, and doing an outstanding job, does a great job making connections with our special education kids at Maguano High School. A great role model, and also doing your Pupil Services Director program right now, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
We finished it up in May.
In May, so. Strong leader at MHS.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, time to Personnel Committee, Fund Seventy-Three Repurpose.
Okay, so we have some conversations here to be had at the board level about our Fund Seventy-Three. So as Tom explained last mon, or I'm sorry, at the last meeting, we no longer need to put in one point nine million dollars each year into our post-employment benefits. We've met that obligation for the most part. Right now, we're estimating that six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand, Tom, would be more appropriate number. So we need to talk about what we'll do with that money. How will we repurpose that one point three million, approximately one point three million dollars? And so, of course, I have some ideas. And I have been working with the administration to identify needs in our district. And that's what that document is behind my memo. So my memo is on page thirty-two and thirty-three, and then our list of budget needs based upon the principals and district administration input. We put that together. But I think you all know, from our conversations with the principals the last couple of years, that their top priority is the interventionists. And so, we have on page thirty-nine, a job description for the interventionist program. So I'm hoping that after tonight, you guys give the go-ahead, that we can proceed with the interventionists, so we can go back and tell the principals that this is something that we're going to be able to make happen for next school year.
With the interventionists, would you be hiring one person to cover two schools? So you have a half-time FTE, but with benefits, so...
So, it would, okay, so first of all, it would be a half-time, or maybe even a little more than half-time, person at each school?
Okay.
So they wouldn't be traveling.
Okay.
So, right now, we have Title One instructors at some of our elementary schools, and actually at Parkview Middle School some years also. And they are not full-time instructors. They help students with math and reading. These would be very similar to those, they'd be paid in the same manner, they would not get benefits. I think that's an important piece, and that's how we're able to do this program for the amount of money that we're proposing there. So no benefits.
So no benefits?
No benefits.
Okay, because in the description you have plus benefits.
No, okay, so, not, I should say, we should clarify that. Not health insurance, so not...
Gotcha.
Yes, I'm sorry, Social Security, we still have to pay for that, but... So, we should have clarified that, I apologize.
That's okay. Alright. Does anybody have any objections to hiring interventionists?
No.
I'm like, finally.
Well, this is something that we've talked about for a long time, that we knew this day was coming, where we would not need to put as much money into that post-entirement benefit fund. And so we knew there'd be some money freed up, once we met our obligation. We've done that now, and Tom has confirmed that with our actuaries. So, now is the time to talk about how to spend this money. And I understand we have lots of discussions yet to be had about how that money should be spent. But I was confident that you would be supportive of that, because you know how desperately we need to help our students that struggle in math and reading, get them extra help.
Well, and we've asked on multiple years, what's your number one, and this has always been it? Why ask if we don't care?
So are we looking for eight positions here, or is it possible that the half FTE for Big Bend and Clarendon could be one hire? Or is the schedule such that it has to be two separate hires?
The schedule is such that it would be two separate hires, to give the maximum flexibility to the principals to be able to have that person meet with the students when they can be pulled out at the best time. And that's going to vary from building to building.
At the high school, is because we have so many more students, is that going to be enough?
Yeah, I think that, that's a great question, Mary, and that's something that we talked to Jim Darren about. And right now, he would like to start with one for next school year. And then when we change our master schedule at MHS, there may be some built-in time where our current staff, instead of supervising a study hall, they would be able to provide intervention help. So, to be determined, but he's comfortable with starting with one for next year. Do we have one or two in there for next year? I can't remember.
One.
Point six nine.
Two-thirds time.
Yeah, they have a little more time, but that's something that we'll look at again after we move to a different master schedule.
Anyone else?
Is that enough time, just on, with the elementary?
So, to be determined. I think we start with that, and then decide if we need to add more. For some schools, because they have Title One help also, I think they believe right now that's going to be sufficient. But, as you know, with changes at the federal level, some of that funding may dry up, may change how it's distributed, and so I think we have to wait and see. But I think, I think they are, they're excited. Principals are very excited about getting this moving forward for next year, freeing up their reading specialist from giving that individual instruction time to those students, and allowing them to coach our teachers on instruction. Instead, work with the teachers in the classroom, and helping to improve reading instruction. That's a big piece of this.
Tim?
So, Eagleville, why don't we just bump it up to four hours, and have the two hours that are access go to the high school? And help up, because I don't know, personally, I don't know if I agree with Principal Darren, but, I mean, obviously, he's the expert. But, I mean, we're talking, portable, quarter-time person, make it half-time, and I'm sure they could figure out something to do for two hours for an interventionist to do.
Yeah, we could certainly take a look at that.
Do you need a motion, or we're just...
No, I'll need you guys to approve when we hire these, as we move through. I just don't want to go through the process of starting the program and hiring people, and then you guys say, no, we shouldn't do that.
Don't you need a motion to move the money from the fund?
That would be something that Tom would do with the budget, and then you would approve the budget.
Alright, alright.
So there are no objections?
We're talking about when we build the budget for next year. We're not talking about this year's monies.
Right. Okay.
So then, the other position that I had talked about in that memo, was a halftime administrative position to... Now, I'm back on page thirty-two. So if you go down to the, almost the last paragraph on the first page, want to move forward with one position at this time, and that's a school-to-work academic career planning coordinator for grades six through twelve. Halftime position, that would most likely be added to either halftime associate principal position at Maguano High School, or some other administrative combination, as we move forward and try to figure out how our administrative team should be put together for next year. As you know, there's probably some changes coming. Approximate cost would be forty thousand, and then I listed some of the things that this person would be doing. This is some, something that I'm asking for tonight. It's a position for next year, but I really want to be recruiting now. Because of the piece that we need help with at the high school with the renovation project, and the career and technical education program. As you guys talked about tonight, we know, we recognize that we need to get more kids involved in career and technical education. When Mark Blatchett was hired, I'm going to say, how many years ago? Almost twenty years ago, he was our school-to-work coordinator, full-time job. But because of budget restraint, budget cuts, he was moved out of that position and moved into an associate principal position. And just was told to do school-to-work coordinator job duties as best he could. So, we need to rejuvenate our career and technical education program. We need to take a look at the success that we've had with the IT Academy, and try to emulate that, replicate that with our manufacturing, with our business, health occupations. Look at establishing those types of academy approach. And then, develop the partners in the community to provide the internships and the work co-op programs for those programs, for those academies. That's not going to happen without some help, without a coordinator. And so if we want to see more kids involved in those programs, we believe we need to get some help.
This is the one part I was waiting to ask you on. How can one person, or how can you divide this and do what you put here well enough for our new facility? I just read this and went, the skill set involved in this one, two, three, four is not necessarily the same. And Mark Blatchett was Mark Blatchett, but that doesn't mean any one of our associate principals right now can take that on and do an adequate job. So when I read this, I was concerned about that.
No, and I hear you. So I think, if you would, are you saying we should hire a full-time person?
If that's, I mean, I don't know. If that's what we need, and that's what their bend is, because this is all going to come down in the next year. Lead the efforts in remodeling, while what? While looking, trying to get the community on board? There's no way one person can have all those two skill sets. And well, there's not no way, but...
So, it's sort of the way we've done things in Maguano, because we're a low-revenue, low-spending district. That's just what people have had to do, they've had to do multiple things. And so, with, you've seen the list of needs that we have there. I was being conservative, because I figured I needed to be with all of our other needs that we have. And I believe that, and I put that in my memo, that's not an all-inclusive list. I'm sure you have some things that you'd like to weigh in, as far as what our needs are.
Helicopter, all day.
So, and that's another discussion that we can have, as far as the board sitting down and taking a look at district-wide, what our needs are, and what you think some of that money that we're repurposing from the Fund Seventy-Three, what you think it should be spent on. I didn't, I didn't dare assume that you'd let me spend it all. And I just want to add that this is not new monies. This is money that's in our current budget, that we're just moving to a different account.
And whether it needs to have some, what did they call, what did he call it? Let's see what they called it. A categorical aid, like a one-time, to find someone that can get to these efforts, and then not make it every year, and then they can go to part-time or something, but to look at this...
It's possible.
We need to be sure that when we start up our new thing, it started up properly.
I agree.
I think it's a position, I agree, that, when I looked at it, it's a position that I think could generate dollars for our district from business partners. If we had someone genuinely working with them, really building a relationship, that there might be those, you know, Genrec wings, or Aptar, whatever, you know, those...
Somebody that could sell it.
Those, yeah. And that guy could, that guy or woman, could generate dollars for our district. I think it's an investment-type of position that would be well worth at full-time. And then can get our middle school kids in the summer school that I keep talking about, so they can touch each one of those trades
Sure.
before they get to the high school. And that'll just build it even larger, and, you know, organize field trips, and the co-op programs and things. It really, I think it can really generate, you know, kind of like Kurt, what Kurt did for us as a district.
I agree.
Having that experience. He's made us so much money, you know, it's incredible. And this position could do the very same thing, except it can't be half-hazard. I mean, it's just, it's got to be full-time. I think this is something that we would have to find the dollars for. And then it'll enable us to do all the other things in there. I believe, just a couple of years down the line, we'll all of a sudden have some cash freed up to do even more things for our kids.
I agree with Art, I think it should be a full-time position, because we're also going to need partnerships with these businesses to supply equipment for those departments.
So, Mary, you recall, I think you went to Hartford with us when we went to see the career and technical education program at Hartford. Hartford has a lot of industry, a lot of manufacturing, and they have supported their tech ed program in tremendous ways, donating equipment, materials. It was very impressive to see their strong community partnerships. But, that doesn't happen just like that. You need someone to go out and procure that, build those relationships.
Tim?
So, I'm not against having a full-time person, let me get that out there. But, I think, maybe I might be misunderstanding what we're looking for, because what I'm reading here, I think you're looking for a technical person that's going to guide these students in being interested in these trades, for example. Not a marketer, that's someone that's going to go out soliciting businesses. Maybe I misunderstood, I guess, what, it sounds like two separate people, what we're looking for. I mean, it could be the same person.
I don't think it has to be two separate people.
I think someone that is going to spur children to be interested in a trade is not going to be someone that's interested in selling.
But you're also going to want to have that same person be in the, in the community, and knowing what businesses are out there, and where positions can be filled, and showing these kids that this, this is what's available, this is where they're looking for work, and this is what, they are intermingled.
Yeah, even our, even our past, Mr. Navatney, he came from the industry, then he is an educator, and that, you know, that is someone that can talk, shop with that business. You know, and it's not, it's just, there's an example of a person that has that, you know, kind of background with both those angles. It can be the same person easily.
Okay, but take Kurt, okay? And no gun against Kurt, because I think he's a great guy. But if I bring a bunch of two-by-fours, and a hammer and nail, and tell them build a wall right here, he's not the guy I'm going to go to, he's not my first pick, you know, for example. And it's just kind of to show that there's a difference between the two, that's why...
Right, right.
You know, there's people that, when they do the estimating, they don't go out there and swing the hammer and build the wall, for the most part, unless you're talking a real small business.
But they have the experience, the past experience of actually doing that work, and I would let Kurt build me a wall any day of the week. Jeff?
As an example, for twenty years, I sold medical devices. I went and I talked to physicians, and nurses, and doctors, and anesthesiologists, and so on, and I knew how to use them, but you wouldn't want me to treat you. But I knew how they were used, and I was able to talk to the people in how to use those items, and I understood that whole, that whole program, but I wasn't a doctor. I don't think, for this kind of position we're discussing, you have to be somebody that is... Because most of these guys, if they're already working, there's a rare individual who wants to go out to do this other part of the job, that is physically doing the job. Typically, that's why they're in that position, is so that they can just build a wall, and do that kind of thing. I think you can have somebody that knows how it's done, knows what's required to do that, can identify with the student, the types of skills they need, what they might be most interested in, without having to be that person, and also then go out and identify where the needs are, how to create partnerships between the... And also then go out and identify where the needs are, how to, how to create partnerships between the, um, the businesses and the schools, and, and, and do that job also. So I think you can have one person do this and do it really effectively, and do it that way.
And I, and I do wanna stress that we still need to hire an instructor for our building trades.
Right.
Courses.
Oh, actually, you could maybe find someone like that.
Yeah. So, really, this would be two positions then, because as you know, we didn't fill that, uh, Tim Navatney's position when he left. So I thi, I see that person, that man or woman as the, the one that is going to be working with the kids and getting them more interested in some of those trades, while the administrator is gonna be doing some of that, but not just for the manufacturing or building trades and welding. But outside that, health occupations, business, marketing, other areas, IT.
Right.
So, they, they may not have the building expertise. They might've been a former, um, family and consumer education teacher, so.
Erica?
I say we, uh, look for the person before we decide that they don't exist. So I think we go for it, and maybe this discussion points to the need for the human resources coordinator. I don't know, but I think before we sit here and hash out whether or not they do or do not exist and put people in a box, I think we need to look.
Okay.
Jeff?
Yeah, the other question I had, and looking at the list of your, your prioritized needs budget going down, you know, we've hit on a few of these. Um, are we looking at also moving forward with, uh, the social workers, the guidance counselors, and that end of things too? Cuz I think that's important.
So, we, absolutely. I would say that next meeting, we'll come back with more information on that. But we also wanna be cautious, because Tom's working on the budget.
Oh, sure.
And, and so, we're waiting for the state legislature to do their work and give us a little better idea of what, what's gonna happen, so. I, I think we have a lot of needs, and like I said, I didn't know if you wanted to weigh in on what you think should be priorities also.
So if I'm looking at this correct, this two-point-six-ish, two-point-five million dollar total on the top, that's just the entire wish list added up. But we're really looking at to spend or reallocate six hundred thousand. So what we're doing is we're kind of going through this, deciding which fit our priorities within that six hundred thousand.
Yeah, we're, we're actually talking a million three, because the six hundred is what we would continue to put into our OPEP funding, uh, Fund 73, instead of one-point-nine million.
Okay.
And that, that's what I'm saying, I think this is, one, we, we shouldn't decide right now, the next couple of weeks, how all this money should be spent. And I think that you guys should, uh, we should probably sit down, have a special meeting about your thoughts on where we should be going.
And again, your focus was on the interventionists to get that going for the next school year, as well as this one position that we've been discussing as a full-time. Because of our large investment in the high school, in those areas, and the need throughout our community for that workforce.
That's correct.
So, okay.
And then, at, at the end of that memo, I just put down, I, I tossed out a few other ideas that, that I think we should be taking a look at. And this is, again, where I'm hoping that you'll weigh in also on what some of your priorities are and what you'd like to see. But, we've, we've talked about some of these things already, just for example, the community education recreation director. I'd really like to, we started that discussion last year as we were talking referendum, and we were visiting with the different municipalities and talking about the need for the referendum to renovate Maguano High School. But at the same time, we talked to the town of Maguano, and the town of Vernon, and a couple others about the possibility of the district taking over that community recreation, uh, piece. Remember that discussion? And so, uh, we definitely have some of our municipalities very interested in that happening. And I know Cherry's talked about, and you were at a couple sessions at the WASB, not la, not this year, last year maybe, where, uh, we saw some good ideas for community education for adults. So, that's something that position and Tom can explain the funding down the road, that would come out of Fund 80. So this is different fund than what we're talking about right now.
Can you get a price for the pre, the virtual school? Sometime can you look into what that costs districts, because?
I don't know if Tim's still here, but, uh, he left. So we're, we're talking about, that this discussion is growing a little bit, an alternative education school. So as you know, some of our students that have behavior challenges, uh, we send to schools outside the district, and we pay a pretty penny for, for that. So, Tim would like to take a look at developing our own alternative school, which could be a virtual school along with a traditional school, small scale. But instead of sending kids outside the district and paying other districts to educate those, those tougher kids, we would do that here with a small number of staff members, very individualized learning. Uh, this would be for some special education students and, and, uh, at-risk students.
That isn't what I've read here. I, I read different, and this is why I'm saying that.
Cherry, can you talk into the microphone so everybody can hear you?
So I'm interested in this because Waukesha, and we lose and lose our money to those kids that go and, and I know some kids who have done that, and I can't, I, I guess I'm wondering how much that would be as far as a cost goes? Cuz there's, there's some kids that just don't wanna go to school, the home school kids, the whatever, and they take these classes, and that's what I read here.
So we have, as you know, four hundred and sixty-five students that are coming in for open enrollment, but we also have about two hundred going out. And some of that is, uh, related to geography, where those kids live, especially in the northern part of our district. If you look on the map over there, the northern part, the orange piece, we have a number of those students that are going to Kettle Moraine. The next biggest chunk of kids that are leaving our district for open enrollment are attending virtual schools. And so, that, that's what I was outlining there. I would love to keep those kids in our district by having a virtual school option. So instead of paying Waukesha, and there are a number of other virtual schools throughout the state, instead of paying those districts to educate those kids who never leave our district, they don't physically go to another district. They stay at home, and they do their learning virtually at home. Well, maybe we should be providing that service instead of paying other districts to do it. And so you're asking how much that costs? Uh, that, that we'd have to investigate, so. If that's something that you think we should pursue, then we would start to look at that.
I think it would pay for itself.
It would pay for itself, because you can easily draw people from outside of other districts.
Yes.
Merrill, Merrill District, Merrill County? There are thousands of kids in Waukesha County, that virtual school, out of Merrill, not out of Waukesha County. Because they have great opportunities through their virtual school. I mean, they're not even staying close to do online virtual, which sets a market that we could tap into.
So they don't have a football team.
And then.
So do we have to hire additional teachers for that?
We would have to hire.
So as, so as we.
Right. So that, that's, that's obviously a, a much more elaborate endeavor. And that, that would create, uh, be a lot of work. But, and, and we're not opposed to work, and I'm just saying that I won't have that planned for you next month. That will take a while to develop, but if that's something you're interested in, we'd love to do the work on that. We just don't wanna proceed with things that you're not comfortable with.
Well, and that might be something that would be nice doing as a learning committee, you know, and getting, you know, someone like Erica that has experience in that.
Absolutely.
You know, sitting down with people that are, you know, interested in finding out more about that.
So I could probably start next month, uh, at least bring you the number of students that we have leaving. That, that are outside the district, receiving education outside the district, either through a virtual school or alternative education site. I can get that to you. Is that a starting point? What'd you think about the Parkview Middle School master plan? Uh, that's a, sorry. Letter A.
So, my question about starting a master plan, it's with an intent of some sort of renovation or addition at the end. We just did a big old referendum that I don't foresee us doing again. At least, maybe that's my own personal opinion, or in the near future preference. So is this something worth starting?
Yeah, first of all, I think that's a fair question, and I guess maybe you guys wanna weigh in first before I answer.
The reason I was gonna say something is, I, I believe, I can remember five, five or six years ago, when I was first elected to the board, was when we first started talking about the high school. And so the timeframe that it takes to get to actually what we're gonna be doing next week, it could be five years out. If you never even started, it's never ever gonna know what, whether or not it should be done, or if it ever would be done. So I guess to, to at least get the idea of whether or not there's a concept there, I, I, I'm open to it, because then we can at least make an intelligent decision on whether or not that's a direction we wanna go at some point.
Well, there's always gonna come back a concept of a need.
Well, I'm sure there will be, but then we can, but then we know more about it, and we can actually make that decision.
Yeah, I, I think, if you recall from the master plan that we did at the high school, one of the things that they took a look at were, were our maintenance items. So I think that, that certainly is a good idea. Also our instructional spaces, so as we change the schedule at Parkview, we'd like to take a look at the spaces that we have, and if there should be some modifications. So for example, you know that we have moved to, uh, language arts block that seventy-five minutes instead of the, the traditional fifty minutes that they have now. By the way, Nick's not here tonight. Uh, he sends his apologies. His wife had a big band concert tonight, so he wanted to make sure he was there to support her. But I, I think we can do a master plan, uh, with, identify needs without saying that we're definitely going to referendum any time in the near future. And the, and the cost is not huge. We're talking between five and ten thousand.
Tim?
Yeah, I think it's important that we do have a master plan, just for the simple fact of reevaluating your needs. You might, like, it's been said, but I'll echo it, you know, it might not go to referendum. But at least you have a current foresight of what's coming in the next ten, twenty years. But, one thing I know, and I know Sean, you've kinda been a proponent for it, kinda kicked around, and I'm real interested in it, is actually seeing what kinda results or what possibilities and opportunities are there to have sixth grade at the middle school? And what kinda impact it would have on, on the, the remained elementary schools?
That, that is something that I'm interested in exploring, and that would be a part of this master plan, to see if that could ever work on our current site. Could we have sixth grade at Parkview Middle School? I have no idea if that building, not the actual building, because just for example, if you're familiar with Parkview, you know there's a big courtyard in the middle? That's empty space, that's really not utilized. We could probably add classrooms there. But I don't know that the cafeteria would be big enough, or the gymnasiums, is there enough gym space? I think you all know, we probably don't have enough parking lot for our current buses and parent drop-off. Where would we, if we added a sixth grade, how would that ever work without making major infrastructure changes? But I think if, if, as we look at our 4K program, if we wanna bring the 4K into our elementaries, that might create the need to move sixth grade to Parkview. Or maybe we take a look at a reconfiguration of our elementaries, where we have K-three sites, or 4K through three sites and, uh, four through six, uh, buildings. Now, I'm not saying that's a good idea.
Yeah, let's know.
All right. But.
Don't say that, Art.
Those are the kinds of questions that a master plan can, can answer.
Fine.
But, but I agree, when, Erica with you, when we went out and sold the referendum last year, people asked, "When are you gonna go again?", and we said, "Not in the foreseeable future." So, we, we can't go back out in the next couple of years.
And, and I do think if you do a master, there may be elements of, that come from that, that can be implemented with what, where we are right now. I mean, there may be some things that say, "Well, if you do this or this", and it's something we may still, may be able to do, without any kind of additional funding. Um, I don't know. But we wouldn't know that unless we investigated that.
So, I can bring back a proposal next month to get that process going, if that's something you're interested in.
Like, how much it might be, and that kind of thing?
Yeah, I can tell you right now, it's between five and ten thousand. So, the Maguano High School master plan was under five thousand. So, I, I don't know that this one would be, but Kurt's confident it would not be more than ten.
I don't like the ten number, I'm just saying. I hear it looks like forty-nine hundred dollars, and then you're like, "Oh, maybe ten."
We'd have to get bids, and so, I, I wanna be honest with you, I don't wanna give you a false impression. That's why I'm playing it on the safe side and saying ten.
They're the ones that wanna do it.
Being very transparent.
Well, I suppose we can go for the bid and see what comes back, and then.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll bring back something next week, or next, uh, meeting.
All right.
I think that's all I have at this time. Did you get, get a chance to look at the Public Policy Forum Report? I know it's a big report. Lot of interesting numbers in there. I gave you a summary when you have time, you know, if you have questions, let me know. But I do think the expenditure piece is very revealing, and shows that the money that we're spending, we're doing a good job of making sure that it's in our buildings. And, and, and with our instructional staff, not at the district office. And, and I think that's wise.
All right. On the unfinished business superintendent's report, school board election.
So, you know what, I gave you that summary, uh, via email, and I talked about both those things. But I wanna thank, again, Mary and Art for attending the Realtor Brunch. And also wanna thank our family and consumer education, uh, program, Renee Maney, our instructor, and the, the students in Intro to Hospitality, they provided a great brunch. It was, it was delicious. They did a nice job.
It was awesome. All right. Even though there was a raspberry on my brownie, but I just pushed that off.
That sounds amazing.
Why ruin chocolate with fruit?
Don't ruin my chocolate with fruit.
Then the correspondence, there's a document that shows the, uh, concussion study that some of our students are participating in with the Medical College of Wisconsin. And just, we just wanted to make sure you were aware of it, and that's football players, soccer players, and wrestlers that are participating. You should be aware, they get a small stipend, that we have checked with the WIA, that that is kosher. And this is not something that, uh, we would be doing without parent permission, so, just an FYI. And then, WASB Day at the Capitol, I don't know if anyone wants to go on March fifteenth. Art, I think you said you may be going, that's also.
I'm there anyways.
Realtor Day, and Jeff, you're gonna be there, you worked there, so.
Yeah, I worked there, so I, I plan to be there.
So do you want us to register you guys, or? Okay, Jeff, yes?
Yes.
Art, you're gonna be?
I'm there.
Okay.
For the Realtors.
If anybody else wants to go, let me know. Mary?
I'll go, just register.
If anybody else.
I always harass them about schools.
I'm sure they appreciate that.
I'm an equal opportunity kinda guy.
And then one other opportunity would be the, uh, Maguano Economic Development Breakfast, which is on, uh, March twenty-third.
I'm going.
And so, excellent. And do you want us to RSVP for you, or you did already? Awesome.
I'll also be there.
And I'll be there.
I'll RSVP.
You're all right, good.
I already RSVPed.
All right, we don't have to do anything. If somebody else wants to join, that's great. And I think that's all I have.
All right. Board member questions?
Can I make, not a question, but?
Yes.
Okay, just a couple things, just that I think we at least be aware of. The girls' basketball team won the regional, um, title. The girls' basketball team won the regional, um, title on last Saturday and they are.
Years in a row, is that true?
Oh, yeah, I know. They're going to be playing on Thursday night at Madison Memorial against Middleton in the sectional semifinal, uh, this week. And then the boys have a home game in the regional semifinal on Friday here at Maguano High School. Uh, we have a state wrestling champ, Eric Moan, won the 220-pound, uh, state championship in, uh, wrestling, uh, this past Saturday.
Yep.
So that's, that's happened off.
Fantastic.
That's a big deal.
I think that's only number seven in the history of our wrestling.
Yeah, that's a big deal. And it was unexpected. He wasn't one of the favorites going into it.
That's correct, right.
So that was, that was a neat thing. And we have the musical, Cinderella's going on right now at the high school. So lots of stuff going on right now.
And then don't forget, we have Parkview Middle School's musical the following weekend.
Junior Shrek.
And, yep, and it's, um, what was that, the 12th, the 10th, 11th and 12th, does that sound right? Is that the weekend?
11th and 12th.
11th and 12th.
Two on a Saturday and one on Sunday. So I, I went to the musical and it's very good, but I sat there thinking, next year, well, I'll be able to see. It was sold out and I had the grandkids and they're short and so it would be nice. And then my question is Senator Nass didn't come today and then did you ever figure out why the other one didn't come?
So Representative Wickers, um, so Craig was able to, and I apologize, I should have told everybody, but you were able to find out that he was actually in a car accident. And you said he has four children and they were in the car with him, is that right?
They all went to the clinic, yeah.
Yeah, so.
That was Chuck Wickers.
And, and he is, uh, we've been in contact with his office and he should be coming next week. I'm sorry, next meeting. Said that a couple of times.
So when we said about a car accident, it really was.
It was, yeah. And I don't have any other information other than that, so Craig might have more than that, if you want to talk to him, but.
I said, where were you? And he said, my kid, I took my kids to clinic after I got re-rended. So that's enough for me.
So that would be March 13th, he's coming? And then I have not heard from Senator Nass and I'll check with Laura tomorrow morning and she'll contact his office and see if he can come also on the 13th of March.
I just want to mention at the Parkview, the VEX Robotics Club. She had six teams this year and about eight kids on each team to deal with, with Kelly Arns and, uh, Schwester. And, um, at the competition, they placed first, second, third, fourth and fifth. And three of the teams went on to state last weekend and they all made it to the semifinal round. They just didn't quite make it all the way to the final round, but they did very well.
Great job. We're going to actually have a space for them after the high school renovation is completed, robotics classroom. So, yeah, so if any of you are storing their equipment in your garage, we'll, we'll have some space for that.
I have a question and maybe it needs to be directed toward Nick, who's not here. Uh, I had a parent come up to me at a band concert, wondering why Parkview and MHS do not figure grade point averages the same? And that our AP classes are not weighted in figuring grade points for the high school, nor are the plus or the minus, like it's a strict 4.0 scale for the high school. Is that indeed accurate and why? I mean, she gave me some of the reasoning as to why she believes we do our high school GPAs the way that we do. However, they don't seem to be done the same way as other high schools nearby, so they might look different on college applications?
Well, so that's a question for Nick.
Yeah, like I said.
And I just, from, from my own experience with my kids, because they took a ton of AP courses and they, uh, I asked a question that you're asking about weighting of, of courses. And not all, but s- some colleges will take that weighted score and unweighted.
Okay.
And so in the end, when it gets to the college level, they try to level everything out so that it, uh, doesn't skew things for the, between the kids that go to have their, their grade point weighted and those that don't.
Well, and I understand that their percentages are put on their transcripts or their grade anyway. However, the difference between the middle school and the high school, I'm wondering about the reasoning why that's not equivalent.
So I will come back with an answer for you on the middle school, high school difference. But as far as the weighted grades, that's a conversation that would be good to have in the next year or so. Because with the schedule changing at the high school, I think that we're going to be talking about required classes for graduation. And so why not talk about weighted grades and Jim Darren can come back and have that conversation? And, and Nick would be a part of that also. But as far as the ability to get into college, for the most part, uh, school is going to take a look at that ACT, SAT score and then also the, the courses that you took. So the more rigorous courses, if you take those and do well, whether they're weighted or not, that's going to have a lot of bearing on whether, what kind of university you get into. Because there is such a big difference amongst different schools and grading. That's why the universities and colleges try to take a look at a uniform indicator such as a standardized test like the ACT or SAT.
I realized I had one more. Can we keep getting updated as to how the scheduling is going to go for the middle school, the high school at the new schedule?
Yes.
Because with an eighth grade or incoming eighth grade daughter, it seems to be a little bit of a nightmare in trying to take a class at the high school because now we have block scheduling and not block scheduling. So it's.
German?
German, but some of, I know there's a couple other kids that go for some math and.
Okay.
I don't know if we thought, did we think that through? Did we talk about that? If we have weird block scheduling at the middle school and now we're trying to send kids to the high school who have different length class periods now.
I'll ask those guys about that.
What's that?
The math is done at the Parkview.
Well, I just know she rides the senior taxi with other kids, so there are others that go over there.
But to answer your question, yes, we can get an update and I think Jim Darren, if he's not at the 13th, he'll be at the 27th of March meeting to give everyone an update.
All right, any other board questions? All right, citizens comments? Yes, can you come up to the microphone?
And then I'll just add, um, you had mentioned, um, activity code. And so I have that on my board and Andy Trudell and Jim Darren will be here in March sometime to talk about that too.
Can you talk into the microphone? Can you sit and talk into the microphone so people can hear you? Thank you.
My name's Rodell and, uh, I'm come before you tonight just to, in reaction to the legislative visitors that we have or don't have. And it brought out a point of experience that you all may not have opportunity. You can make an opportunity happen, but it's difficult. The scheduling of joint finance committee is very, very, on a daily basis sometimes. And, um, my first suggestion is that this board needs to know every member of the joint finance committee because this is the budget year. You do have an election budget. And my second recommendation to you all is that you do learn a lot. My experience has been that way. You do learn a lot by going to joint finance. You can't speak, sometimes you can't even find a wall to, to lean on. But you need to understand that process. And it is hard to find the day before that it's going to be an agenda item on education or the portions of the budget that deal with education. But it would serve you as a per- serve you as a person and as a school board member to try to understand those conversations and, um, learn who's on that committee and who isn't and relate that to our district.
I can get you the list of names, the senators and the representatives on the joint finance committee and then as soon as they establish a budget hearing schedule, I'll get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like the list of the committee.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, will you, Jerry?
Okay, motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.